A couple of New York bills regarding expanding the alcoholic beverage production tax credit. My understanding, as I was talking to these folks, is that New York State does an amazing job, I think, of encouraging folks at breweries and wineries through the tax perpatual status. What we found in talking to folks at Lockwood Distillery is that that does not cover folks like that who are still... So there is some legislation that's pending, I'm understanding. And so Mel, that's your district, which one speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, they've been talking to me at least last year about this, and then it really puts distilleries at an unfair advantage because your breweries and cideries, I mean, your breweries and your wineries have this credit, and yet your distilleries and your cideries actually don't. So what this is trying to do is to put everybody on a level playing field to help them, because usually your distilleries in New York are small. They're local, small, individually run. Lockwood is family-run, and they're excellent. I mean, everything they've done there is they film themselves, and it is the first distillery in Oswego County since prohibition. And they're doing excellent. In fact, they've won now nine international awards, not only for their labels but for their vodka. Of course, excuse juice, as we all know, has been pulled because of litigation with Syracuse University. So if you've got a bottle of it, keep it, because, yeah, I wish they couldn't go to court. They said they really feel they would win, but they can't afford to.
I thought this resolution was going to be supporting them in the name of Houston.
Yeah, I had hoped too, when I first saw it, I was like, oh, you know, but this is important for them, but they're...
Does she have cues to create one?
No, and they're doing it now with an ampersand type of a thing, and it's like, the whole litigation, they say it's orange and it's cues, and they don't want, this is the funny part of it, they don't want Syracuse University tied to an alcoholic drink. Mind you, Syracuse University's been the top three parties at universities for years, but, so they're trying to go around, I don't know what they're gonna do, but they're gonna try to sell the jet, but they're supposed to pull them off the wall shelves and everything. So it's real, it's too bad, it's a nice little court.
So, I mean, I guess ultimately, this is, we're looking just to level the playing field.
Yep.
Is there any discussion on this? Actually, let me look for a motion for this.
Hi, that's Mel.
Thank you, a second. Oh, excellent. Any discussion on this? If not, we're both all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you. All right, well, let's jump right into our reports then. Janet is here, she's going to give us some awesome news.
Yeah, I just want to go over a few of the projects that we've been involved in over the past couple of months. This that I'm passing around right now is a series of billboards that we developed, and most of the photos in here came from a project that we were involved in last summer to accumulate photos and video to help overcome the effects of the flooding for 2017. And because things got so much worse this year, we made the decision about a month ago or so to reallocate some money in our budget that we had allocated for another project, and contracted with Lamar Billboard Company, and we have a series of billboards, most of them on 81 in the Syracuse area, or in the Scram, in the Lutz very PA area, and then there's some at Fort Drum. And so if you look through, they focus on charter fishing, but also other assets. We have the lake, the lighthouse, paddling, museums, sunsets, salmon hooker falls, just to let people know that we still have things going on here that were open, and let them know that there's still visitors welcome here. Also, as part of this, we have two 30-second videos running at Destiny USA. These were videos that were produced previously, one is our summer video, and it's also running through Channel Nine right now, and the other one is a fishing video, which is running through Channel Nine. And then we're doing some boosted social media activities with that, too. So that's that project. And I also wanted to mention, we've been running for the last couple of years periodic ads in Adirondack Life, and we started one last year about paddling miles of waterways such as Deer Creek to Lake Ontario. So this has been running a couple of months in Adirondack Life, and I'm a member of the Adirondack Paddling Facebook group. So this post popped up a couple of weeks ago, has anyone around here paddled Deer Creek, and I'm pretty sure originated from that app, but it generated a lot of conversation and a lot of really good dialogue. One of the people that responded mentioned, be sure you stop at Coloss G's and pick up some of their triplets, whatever, things like that. So it's really nice to see some of these ads working together now, and, you know, pulling in people of different interests. We've had a lot of media coverage about the Port Ontario Refugee Shelter the last couple of days. It was a really great program last week. I'll pass this around. It was a very large crowd, and there were nineteen of the original refugees there, plus many families, generations of families, like, some of them were the refugees, children, their children. Someone brought really young children, and it was just really amazing, the kind of interaction that was there. And the program is linked on the CMY central website, so you can see a lot of what transpired. The National Mayhem Fund, it was speakers, it was very ambassador to there, Congress and the CACCO, and they both gave really great speeches, and then many local officials, I'd just say the Broadway House book as well, on behalf of him. So that program, the original one started at two and lasted until almost five, and then until the dinner started at seven and lasted till like eleven. So it was a really long day for people, but it was wonderful media coverage from local and some major media as well. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, been involved in several different, hosting several different press trips. In May, we had two outdoor riders from Pennsylvania that fished around a lake, and they're, they stayed at Constancia Cove and Montecarlo there, and they'll be writing about that in preparation for the outdoor show season in January. I was just in touch with one of the riders this morning. Then today and yesterday, we're hosting a gentleman from PA Outdoor Life TV show, and we'll get two shows out of that, and they fish with Captain Greg Garrett of K and G, and this was a program that we do annually. It's a fundraiser for muscular, just for someone from Pennsylvania bids on a package, and they get a fishing trip with Greg, and they get lodging, and we provide one ring's dinner for them. And they did really well yesterday, they caught, they at least ate fish, like, the largest was forty-three pounds.
That's nice.
Yeah, the women that all went on a trip caught, so they're all now competing for fishing again today, so they're all competing with the sea to get the biggest fish. And then we also hosted a travel writer from Saratoga area for St. Haven, so she was part of the whole activities yesterday. And then in September, we're hosting four writers and a guide from the public relations firm that I love New York works with. And they'll be staying at the tailwater. They'll be part of a trip to Thousand Islands area and to St. Lawrence County, but they'll be staying at the tailwater. I'm not sure yet if they're gonna fish or just do some hiking and sightseeing in the past guy in the Salmon River area, they haven't decided yet, but we have that coming on as well. Just wanted to let everybody know what's going on in tourism.
That's exciting, thank you so much.
You know, these banners, I mean, the...
The billboards?
The billboards, thank you. Do we have any of this copy on our website? I mean, there's some beautiful pictures, you know, that we can regenerate and keep going type of on our website.
Yeah, they are, they are, we have like a rotating photos that is at the county site, so a lot of those are used on there already.
Okay, good, I mean, you might as well use them, they're gorgeous. I mean, it's a real nice eye catcher to reuse them for that, that's great.
Right.
Very busy, haven't you?
Yeah, we have a really good team, they work hard. But with that project, we worked pretty closely with I Love New York on that, to let them know that, because they approved our marketing plan at the beginning of the year, and to let them know that we were thinking of doing that instead of starting work on a fishing hunting guide, and they were really supportive, but the dialogue with them, because of the high water and working with them on that, they've been really receptive to working with us and trying to be as supportive as they can on marketing with what's going on with the Lake Ontario water level. And so it's been, you know, a really good partnership with them.
Now, with the I Love New York things, they have like a destiny and where you can go. Is Oswego incorporated into those, or are they only the county that they're in?
No, Oswego is, that one is set up through the CMY regional counties, so it's Oswego, Kewa, Madison, Anadaga, and Portland. So we were all involved in identifying some of the assets, like some of the rocks and things to be putting there. And they did, the map I'm not crazy about, but they did a really good job with getting video from our county. I was really quite amazed that they put so much effort into it. It's, like I said, it's a lot more productive partnership in the last couple of years.
Now, what about, though, when you reach out away from central New York, is there anything from Oswego incorporated into the I Love New York, let's say, down in the Hudson Valley?
Well, there is right now, because when the governor was here last week, he announced some of the different things the state was doing for the high water campaign, and they developed a Lake Ontario app, it's a 30-second spot, and that's running all over. It has the Maritime Museum and South Park Shore State Park identified in it, plus it's got locations from Maga County to the Thousand Islands, but my son saw that in Pittsburgh like that night, and I, so I know that is running in markets that we were now approaching. And that in itself goes really valuable for us.
Okay, yeah, because I was, I know, I was told that some of those, the outline ones in other parts of the state only include their area, and I'm like, well, gee, if I've got a tourist coming up to New York, I'd rather, you know, why not give them Oswego information down, you know, down in Binghamton and Hudson Valley and over and above, but it seemed like most of our information is here, where people are here.
It is.
I'd love to get it where the people, oh, gee, well, why don't we travel a little further up and get to Oswego?
Well, that, that question, for the regional visitor centers, the only literature they have in their I Love, the print I Love New York Travel Guide, and then some of them have a regional print guide, but the only representation we have, and it's like this for all the counties across the state, is in the I Love New York Travel Guide, like in the Hudson Valley one. We are in the Alex Bay one, but we're not in the Binghamton one, but it's something that our Tourism Industry Association is working pretty hard on trying to get that changed.
To get, okay.
Right, because they give us funding to produce a visitor guide, but then they don't allow us to distribute it in the places we used to be able to, and we feel really strongly that has to change.
Well, I'm glad that there's something going on, because when I heard that, and this is ridiculous, that you're not advertising other places and other parts of the state, you're only advertising where you are. So tourists coming through is, okay, here's here, but is there anything else?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Yeah, can you just update us on your role of the ready committee and what's happened since the last meeting at Sheldon Hall, if anything?
A notice went out for a meeting of the work group next week. My role and the role of the other, there's other people in planning and community development besides Dave that are involved in it, and what we've been trying to do is work with the communities as much as we can to make sure that, for one thing, the concerns that were identified, like the projects were identified, are represented in the list that people are putting together, that the committees putting together, and also that businesses or attractions knew that if they had a concern, like the Marina, Salmon Country Marina, we would go to the Mexico Town Supervisor to provide information, and the conduits are the local town supervisors, and then through them to the rest of the community, if you say that's accurate, if that's true. So as far as what we're doing, planning and community development, we're trying to work with the different communities to, as the lay is on.
So what's happened since the meeting at Sheldon Hall?
The only thing I'm aware of is a meeting notice went out that there will be a meeting next week, but I haven't gotten any background at all on what everyone's roles are or what the agenda is.
Are you talking about the first meeting at Sheldon Hall or the second? The second, no, I'm talking about the second meeting at Sheldon Hall. My concern is, nothing very little's happening that we have input to, other than that front diet base.
The, they had, they had everybody in the room go around, tell those different platforms, you know, changes in notes. They told us that they were going to make all those changes, send it out again in an email form, so that it could, people could take the time and look through it more thoroughly. And the engineers are supposed to be back in touch with the areas affected to get more information, visit them, and then get putting some numbers together. And then, you know, I don't know what the agenda for the third meeting is gonna be, they said there's gonna be a third, I'm not sure if it'll be at Sheldon or somewhere else, we're waiting on that. So they're getting their input through the people, the people who are invited to the Sheldon meetings, I think are supposed to be talking to their staffs, their other, their other, a lot of people, the retainers to generate the ideas and gather the information and convey it to them.
Now, that was all due by August 2nd, so at this point, the idea is written, is our understanding, so have we as a county started to consolidate, or, I mean, I understand that the state is hired to do that, but I would think we as a county would want to know maybe all the ideas that are in, we want to start taking a point on that communication, or are you saying that that's more going between the individual municipalities and projects?
My, my understanding, the lead is that the more of the local plausible for those projects, not in the county, and I'm not suggesting it should be in the county. My, my concern is that we won't be spurred at that level, at that base, it's up there at the state level, that there's a, I perceive a certain sad to it, I perceive they'll do what they want to do, what they think they want to expect. So I'm just, I know you're on that, and I just think we need to have some loud voices there and pressure to keep it moving, because the lake's going down, the heat's being removed to a certain extent, and then, you know, before it's gonna be September, the lake will have dropped a foot, and it'll be forgotten until March April, I think. So I'm not, I'm not going to settle that this is the new one. I'm gonna make as much noise as I can. My constituents have been affected seriously, not just businesses, but property owners. I'm concerned that the, the effect's gonna have on our tax evaluation property. I think you're gonna see a run on grievance day for that. So, and, and a lot of my people aren't looking for free money. We're looking for it to stop. They want, they want a plan amended, and I don't think there's enough talk about that versus Cuomo getting FaceTime on TV about... So, so I'm hoping the pressure will stay up on that, and we're not, we're not willing to settle.
Have you reached out to the folks in your area who are submitting the plans, have they heard back from the consulting network?
I, I forced myself to answer.
Have you heard anything from them?
Um, no, because it, I mean, we made some amendments, I was at Sheldon Hall, we made some amendments, and we'll be waiting to hear what happens. I, I, one of my concerns is a lot of what needs to be done is kind of state or federal property. I mean, I need the Army Corps of Engineers to do what I need to do. I need the state of New York to fix something at the state park. I'd rather see that three hundred thou, three hundred million be used in places that other government funded can't use that. I mean, why should we take our piece of sort of county key, whatever that is gonna be, if it's submitted up like that, and use it on state property?
So outside of the meetings that we've had at the college, has anybody heard anything outside of those meetings? This is kind of the question, you're like, what's happened since that meeting, right? I have not heard anything. Has anyone heard anything from anyone outside of the meetings?
Nope, I'm not, but I'm not on the front panel of the chairman and Dave are, but they are, so they may be getting, I don't remember, Dave's on vacation.
Yeah, there was an email that went out of a notice for a meeting next week of that working group. But it's also my understanding that for the state facilities like South Park Shore or Mexico Point, that the state agencies will be using their money for those to, for the maintenance in those facilities, but they want them on the list because they want to make sure that they're reflected as part of the overall picture of what the infrastructure damage is.
They're not getting part of the free money?
That's what we were told last week when we pitched at the Hall, I asked that question.
Okay, I think we should just keep our eye on that one.
We do continue to question for some of those wanting to be used residential, these seasonal communities for repairs of their roads and frontage. That's, that's enough to handle because it wasn't intended for residential.
Well, I'm looking over the project, is there any private companies on that, private corporations, private businesses? I know there are a few in...
There's some marines, I'm not even sure.
Yeah, Dowie Dale came from...
Are you gonna go to restaurants?
Green Point, yeah.
Green Point, Salmon Country Marina, was Gary yourself, so...
Derby Hill was spread inside in the list. You know, there's quite a few facilities out there, but if I can just add to this, please, I talked to Rowan and Julie about it, and your point was well taken. My, my concern was using the $300 million to fund state-owned facilities, and they said, no, they're gonna try to do it through different state agencies, because that would just kind of take away from the pool of money that we could use to develop our stuff. And I, you know, living right next to, you know, the town of Richland on the lake, I've talked to some of your, your lakefront owners, and some of the buildings already are almost vacant and running down on the other side of Derby Hill and down that way. Ramona Beach has been hit hard. I mean, you're, I think, you know, Mexico has been hit, you know, fairly decently, but I think the way the wave action runs, I think Richland is suffering more than, and I don't wanna say suffering more, but they're getting a greater impact of the high waters and the waves than maybe a few other areas like where I live. And there's, you know, I think Ed is right on, I think we have to keep the heat on, we have to make sure that, you know, we're right there in the forefront through the, whatever committee is organized, because it's economically, housing, infrastructure, and natural quality of life is all important to this area, and it's affecting us.
That's good, thank you. Thanks, Eric. Did we ask any other questions? Great, thank you so much, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's great to have the governor up here, I had him meet last week, and highlight the things that we have going on around here. I'll tell you, I ended up taking my family to Fairhaven Beach, got in for $4 instead of $8, so it was very, did not need my fishing license tonight or a log, but wouldn't have needed it. All right, what, thank you. Anything else? All right. Great, okay, well, I see Erica has compared, you are up.
Hey.
What do you have for us today?
Okay, just a little educational piece update, I don't have any items for today. Part of my job at the Soil and Water Conservation District is to organize a couple of different education, environmental education programs throughout the year, and in May, we had the Oswego County Fire Con, which some of the committee recognized that team at the June legislative meeting, so thank you for that. And so our next program coming up is called Oswego County Conservation Field Day. That will be Thursday, September 19th, at South Park Shore State Park. It's for fifth grade students this time, so the high school program could be Fire Con. But we'll be at South Park Shore State Park, as I mentioned, and what's neat about this program is transportation's covered by a grant from New York State, so the schools traveling to the program are able to get their transportation costs covered. And what the students do at the park is we have stations set up, and I will be sending out invitations to the committee, so we hope they can come and join us with us, it's another fun day. And we have about anywhere from 400 to 450 fifth grade students, and we have about 20 to 25 stations set up at the park, again, depending on how many classes we have, and we try to have all hands-on activities, whether it's a game, something they're participating in in small groups, and as many hands-on things as we can. So I brought a few of the examples of topics that they might learn about at their stations. And we have all kinds of different keys on our, whether it's from the Santa River Fish Hatchery, Oswego County, whether it's from sports club members, the forestry department, yeah, we have everything covered from birds, animals, whatever about farming, trapping in the wildlife management tool, so so many different things that we can expose students to that they may not learn about in the classroom, or they may not learn about in the classroom at the same level. So one of the stations will have, I don't know if you want to pass these around, but it's kind of cool to see some of the things that the kids would do that we have. So those are just rubber fish replicas, and the students will be given just a very general key to help determine what families the fish are, and whether it's bird trap, or, that's again, something they might do in a small group within their station. And the stations are only 20 minutes, so we're just giving them little snippets of information about these different topics, but usually there's a brain on, enthusiasm, and energy during the day.
Erica, are you working with the school districts?
So, yep, so we work with the school districts, all fifth grade classes are invited to attend this. And again, we typically have 20 to 25 classes, some schools, because of their transportation budgets, and even though this one is covered, I understand they're telling you out of the school, you know, so many days per year, but they'll try to come every other year to this program.
Does that include the pro field schools as well, do you know?
Yes, yep, so turn the case like one of our main contributors or participants in the program. Because of the mini dune system that we have here in Oswego County, one of the stations might be where they're specifically learning about the sand dunes at the eastern end of Lake Ontario, so we try to do a little bit of conservation education with them. If they do visit that area, to only follow the walkways or the pathways that are set up on those dunes and not to be trampling the dune beach grass that is there, because that's excellent for holding the sand in place. Another one of the stations could be a tree ID, so we'll have some actual tree samples and leaves, leaves, and they'll use the Tree Finder Guide to help identify which tree species those are. And we have presenters from, whether they're agencies, volunteers, anywhere from in their twenties all the way up to eighty-five years old. We have a gentleman who still comes to do a tree ID because he loves it. You know, Tom Richards from Mexico area, he's been involved in a lot of different activities. Maybe he's older than eighty-five now, but anyway, wonderful gentleman that comes to do the tree ID with a student. And another topic, please, we've had a... And another topic, uh, we usually head upon is invasive species, whether in their terrestrial, invasive species. This is a replica of a purple blue stripe plant, so we do a little ID with the students and educational piece on that. And then also, they really like a lot of specimens, but we also bring some, uh, other specimens that are no longer living. They always play the sea lamprey, which is fascinating. Uh, if you don't know a lot about that species, uh, something we definitely wanna keep out with the fishery, uh, in our area. So we'll have, uh, some pictures of the sea lamprey. I want the students to pass this around so they can really check that out. And this, again, it's all based on the folks that we have coming to present the topics to the students. Again, whether they're agency folks or volunteers, it really runs because of those people that come and spend the day with us. So when you receive your invitation, uh, through the committee, if you are able to come and have, uh, spend a little bit of your time with us, we love that. We do provide lunch at the end of the day for all the presenters and volunteers, so thanks for your time. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that program, and we're looking forward to that in September. And it'll be our thirtieth, excuse me, thirty-first annual conservation year. If there's any questions about the program, but...
Did you have to log your time hog week today, so that's...
No, I didn't have to. My hog week ends up at the county fair, so...
That's what I was gonna ask, if you're at the fair.
Yeah, so we did set off our booth at the fair yesterday, and we'll be there a couple of different times throughout Manning at full time. But we do, um, did focus on invasive species at the fair, but the hog week is tucked in the corner there.
And we just found a new one up in, up in my district, welcome to Hill, so. It's crazy. But people have become more aware of it. I've seen more and more posts on Facebook just from people who are mentioning that stuff. That's great.
Uh, with the, with the purple blue stripe, I know it's been coming along for years. And are we doing anything to get rid of it? I mean, it's prettier than the cat.
Right, yeah, there isn't an active program for our office anywhere. I'm not sure if other agencies are. The, um, groups have gotten a good handle on it over the years with their educational programming that they did in the nineties and beyond that, um, and trying to introduce some other more native species and hand pulling that out.
So it is, there is something hand pulling that they do with that?
Yeah, like I said, for our office, we haven't done anything real recently, I thought.
That's great. Uh, any other questions? Okay, well, if not, um, I just procedurally, because Mel has to leave, um, I'm going to take a motion to adjourn now. We're still gonna have Mike's annual, but because there's only four of us here right now, if Mel leaves, we do not have the ability to even adjourn because it won't break.
Well, she's gonna be here forever.
So just procedurally, I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn so that we can close this out. Uh, so Mel, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And, uh, and then we'll kick it right over to Mike for his final thing. Alright?
I'll make that one.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Paul, on paper?
I've already seen it in the annual, so it's not like I'm missing.